The makeup of man. And what we said last week about the heart of man will flow right into what I have today. A problem that I've seen in the church is that, especially when it comes to the grace church, is that a lot of us don't know what to do with signs, wonders and miracles. We don't know what to do with the supernatural. We don't know what to do with the power of God and all those kinds of things. And when it comes to the church that we come out of, especially if you come from a Pentecostal charismatic background, I'm sure you would have encountered hurt and pain and those kinds of things when it comes to signs, wonders and miracles. Because what we were doing is we were chasing after the supernatural much more than what we were hoping for immortality. We tried, we basically came and we had made the end goal, signs, wonders, miracles. And that is the highest form of life that we could have had in this world. You would look at people that's got gifts of prophecy, gifts of healing and all those kinds of things. And the fact that they have those gifts would immediately qualify them as teachers of the word or as men of God, that can really hear God, that knows God and all those kinds of things, which is not the case. The fact that signs, wonders, miracles is in your life doesn't mean that you understand the work. It doesn't mean that you are... I mean, let me put it this way, as much as what a person that's got a good hand-eye coordination, that can catch a ball out of the air, as much as what that doesn't make him a healthy person. That's how little signs, wonders, miracles and the supernatural can define who you are. A miracle is not a sign of who you are, it's a sign of a futuristic event that will still take place in the return of Jesus Christ. That's why it's called signs. The Bible says these signs will follow those who believe. So it is simply a sign. You know, when I drive from here to another town, I mean, two weeks ago I drove to, a week ago I drove to Cape Town, which is like a 17, 18 hour drive. And you know, my vision is not, my aim is not the next sign. You know, I'm not driving from sign to sign. That's not how I drive. The vision is the farm, Ilianas, my father-in-law's farm, that was the vision, that's where I was going. And I just think that we need to, in the very same way, let me just close Facebook here. Otherwise you guys are going to hear this all the time. Right, so when you look at signs, wonders, miracles, we need to realize that is not the end goal. And to look at that just from a scripture perspective, where when I come and I declare to you, that is not the end goal, you will still find many people that will come to you and say to you, oh, you know, we must endeavor to do the supernatural, we must take authority over things and all those kinds of things. And you might still have something in your heart where you feel you don't qualify or you are not good enough or you have not reached the place that you need to reach or you would feel you are walking in little faith or something like that. Now, the place where we're going to start, now that's where we're going to go with this by the end of next week. But now I want to talk about the design of man and how man was made, who we are. And I also want to talk about what we are. The Bible says, and I want to read from Genesis 2 and verse 7, Genesis 2, verse 7. You can jot all of this down and what I'll also have Janet do is just take these notes that I've made and just send it to you guys. Genesis 2, verse 7 says, "And the Lord God formed man from the dust of the ground and breathed into his nostrils the breath of life, and man became a living soul." And man became a living soul. So if we look at that verse and you ask yourself the question, what are you? The Bible doesn't say you are a spirit. It doesn't say you have a soul and you live in a body. That's not written there. That's not what man became when God made man. When God made man, he became a living soul. That's what he became. He became a living soul and a living soul has been such a foreign concept to us that we don't really understand what a living soul is. We just think a living soul, well, we just believe he became alive, you know. So animals also, they are also alive, birds are also alive, many things are alive. There's life, even a germ is alive. The fact that something became alive doesn't make him a living soul. So what is a living soul? What happened, and I want you to understand this because this is a very interesting process in how God creates. He took basically his spirit. And when his spirit entered into dust and he formed man from the dust of the earth, he shaped man from the dust of the earth. And when his spirit entered that dust, man became alive. But the way wherein he became alive was not like the life of the animals. The Bible also talks about the animals that was made from the dust of the earth. You know, everything actually comes from the dust of the earth. But we were formed out of that, but something different happened. The spirit of God came and created us into a being that was called a soul that was alive. Now, when we look at the word soul, I want to read from Thayer. And I'm going to, it says, "It means breath or life, a vital force which animates the body and shows itself in breathing." So a soul is something that manifests itself inside a human body. And in this case, it just talks about the life inside a person and refers to animals or men. But we talk about our soul, the soul of humans, it says, "It's the seat of the feelings, the desires, the affections or your heart." So what it says is basically is that your soul is your heart. So what God has done is he has made, he's taken dust when he made man and he has given this dust, this unique ability to believe or to trust. The Bible says, "With a heart we believe unto righteousness, or as a man believeth in his heart so is he." Out of your heart flows the issues that drives your life or the forces that drive your life. So what God has done when he made man is he created a being that has the ability to function from his persuasion. So when we are living souls, it means that we are alive from the foundation of our persuasion. So when you're a living soul, we are alive from the foundation of our persuasion. That's the kind of being we are. And that is the same with God. God is alive from the foundation of his persuasion. God is persuaded of his love for you. God is persuaded of who Jesus is. God is persuaded of the plans that he had for you from before time. And out of his persuasion, his persuasion manifests. And that manifestation that's out of his persuasion is a truth that on its side can then persuade us again. From where we can have then the same persuasion as God and so have this life or this persuasion we have animate or give life to our bodies. That is how we work. When we are as humans, and I want you not to, I feel in the spirit, some of you guys are still stuck with, I say we don't have spirits. No, I'm not saying you don't have a spirit. If I say we are not a spirit, have a soul, live in a body, all I'm saying is, let us come to a place where we just think along the lines of this passage where it says, "We became a living soul." The process was as follows, there was a spirit that came and entered this dust. And when the spirit could come into this dust, it brought forth a being, it created a being that could then function from its persuasion. The being in that state is what I defined in my first book I wrote, which was, I mean, I'm sure all of you read it or know about it, Born from Innocence. That I define as innocence, the innocence of man. The place where you are a living soul, where you can function and live from your persuasion, where you are not enslaved to anything, but where you are free to... You know, when you were under the law, you could be persuaded of the goodness of God, it doesn't matter, you would have been bound. But when the law system was ended and the truth came in Christ, from that time we were free to live from the persuasion of our hearts, which if it is towards the law, we could be bound by the law. If it is towards what God has done, it could be towards the life that God has given us. Okay, so when we talk about a living soul, we're talking about, I would say the best definition I can have of a living soul is a person. A person. When God made Adam, Adam became a person. A person is someone who's got the attributes distinguishing him from animals or anything else, where he can have a life born from his persuasion, where through his persuasion he can have access into the very life of God. And that is what God has made us. Everything in our life functioned from that. You need a spirit or which in this case is a spirit of God. The spirit of God, when it enters you, or when it entered man, it brought forth a being that can live by his persuasion. Now, if you are a being that lives by your persuasion, that doesn't mean you're saved. It just means that you can now have different persuasions or different truths from where you can then actually live. And should we then have the same persuasion of God, then this soul or this person has got access to what is called eternal life. And I want to read that to you from Thayer's Greek definitions. It says, "The human soul is so far as it is constituted that by the right use of the aids offered it by God, it can attain its highest end and secure eternal blessedness. The soul regarded as a mortal, a moral being, is designed for everlasting life." So what he's saying here is that God came and he designed something from the dust of the earth which will have the capability to receive everlasting life. So when he made man, he said, "Let me create a being that can live from persuasion as we are in the Trinity. And then from this persuasion, I will give them access to eternal life." So when God, and I want you to look at that because that is a very, very important part in scripture. Some of you might agree with me, some of you might not agree with me. But the way I look at the gift of eternal life is that God took dust, he made dust alive, a living soul, then he presented this living soul with his life. And then this being can then have the freedom of choice, free will, to then buy into or partake of this eternal life, which is God's life. And then he has the ability to be, to live forever. Before that moment, he cannot live forever. He will die. Now, that means that Adam, and this is the way I see it, if Adam, when Adam was made, and just think of it this way, when God made Adam, it wouldn't be fair if you make a being, if you just think inside family logic, would it be fair if you have a being or you give birth to something and this being is now, he didn't have any choice, but he has eternal life now. This eternal life will either be with you, if he likes it or not, and if he doesn't like that, he will eternally burn in hell. I mean, there's something, if we look at that, if we just look at that logic, it says, there's something about God being sovereign in the sense of overriding anybody's choice. There's something about, I'm not having a choice, I don't have freedom, I cannot... Because many people say, "I never asked to be here. I never asked to be here. So now I am here, I wish I never lived. You know, I wish I never existed." And there are not just one person saying, there are many people that say that. Now, I believe when God made man, he made him from the dust of the earth, showing that he's taken from the temple. And then he took of his spirit, which is life. God is the only life there really is and all life that exists comes from his life that he then borrows to you. So he says, "Let me take a little bit of my life, put it inside this dust and make this dust alive. Then I will present this dust with my life and give him the opportunity and the dynamics of having immortality, my immortality." And should he want that, he can have it. Should he not want that, what he told Adam would take place. He says, "You are from dust, you'll return to dust." So you will just be at the place you were before you were made. That is basically it. Now, when we understand that, we come to a place where we say, whatever we are, the fact that I'm alive is basically, there's something unique about me because if God took me and he blew the breath of life in me, there's certain things, certain personality traits that is inside me. And Berti came into existence. So you would find God puts breath into a certain speck of dust and Berti comes forth and Berti is alive as long as what this life is in him, Berti exists. But the moment that life leaves him, what will happen to Berti? Berti's going to die because my person will not be there, I'll be dead. Unless Berti has got eternal life. So if eternal life has been granted to him or if he was made a partaker of eternal life, his life will be preserved forever. Now, you might say, how does this ever going to get to the gifts of the spirit? If we can understand how the life of God functioned in us, how it takes place and what God's plan is with man, we will understand where the gifts of the spirit come in. Now, what I'm driving at is this. When God, when God wants to bring forth, or God's original plan with you was to have a being that has the ability to contain immortality. Now imagine you are a God that is the only being in existence, there's only three of you. You are spirit. You are spirit, you are not physical at all, you are only spirit. And then you say, "Let us make a being that can fully function like us, fully be like us and have our quality of life and let us grant unto them who and what we are." What those people have to, what they would have to have is immortality. The only way they could have immortality is if they have the ability to live by their persuasion. For that's how we get access into eternal life. How do we have access into eternal life? By faith. So God comes and he says, "Let me create this being, I'm going to show him my life, I'm going to persuade him. And if he can be persuaded with my persuasion, then my spirit indwells him." Okay, so God makes you alive with his spirit. And then he says, "Inside your soul, inside your will, your intellect, your way of thinking, your heart, I just, I don't want you to be alive on the fact that my spirit makes your body alive, but I want you to have my life." The only way you can have God's life is not by the fact that you are alive. It is by the fact that you are persuaded with his persuasion. That your heart believes what he believes, that you start to think what he thinks. So he says, "Let me persuade him. If you are of the same persuasion as God is, the spirit of God is indwelling you." Now let me explain that. If I am, there was a guy in South Africa called Eugene Terblanche. He was the leader of a far-right wing party called the AWB, which wanted to go and make war in the time when Juan Mandela took over. He just wanted to shoot them, whatever you want. And there's a lot of things to say about him. But if you would go to one of his meetings, and I want to use him because he was such a... He had such a strong persuasion and when he would speak, you know, he would persuade people. I was just a kid, I mean, I never went to any of his meetings, but I could see the people that come from those meetings and how they are. You could actually see Eugene Terblanche live in there. You could see that the spirit of that man indwells these people. Because they are persuaded. It's like go and watch some of the videos of Hitler or some of these guys. You will see the spirit of a certain person, if the moment people believe what he says, that word is actually that man's spirit. Now, please don't think I say, "We don't have a spirit." That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying what the Bible says. The Bible says, "My word is spirit and it's life." And I'm just trying to explain what Jesus said when he said, "My word is spirit." So, and the Bible also says that the first Adam was made a living soul, the last Adam was made a life-giving spirit. Now I want to explain that. So when Jesus, why can we say Jesus is a life-giving spirit? Because Jesus is a word about us which we can believe. And when, who he is and what he hears is a message to us. That word believed in our hearts brings forth the spirit of the one that is the word in our lives. And that is how we live. And that is the foundation from where we have the gifts of the spirit. Okay, but that spirit has got a certain plan with man. That spirit is not, the main purpose of the Holy Spirit is not to prove that he can create gold dust that falls from the ceiling. Now, if the spirit of God feels that he has not made enough gold on the earth and he wants to add more gold, it is okay. You know, I'm not against it. If the spirit of God wants to believe that he has not made enough diamonds on the earth and he wants to throw diamonds down right here where I said, how welcome, it's glory to God. You know, I will preach the gospel with those diamonds, I promise you. I'll first have to go and get a license to sell them, otherwise they're going to lock me up. And South Africa's got certain laws about these things, you know. So, anyway, and I'm not mocking any of these signs. What I'm trying to say is that that is not the end goal of the Holy Spirit. The effect that the spirit has on man, I'm not talking about the spirit that makes you alive. I'm talking about the spirit that is now indwelling the living soul on account of persuasion. That spirit has got a plan with you. And the plan of that spirit is to preserve your life eternally, that you would not die. That you would not go into, and we can try and define death in another Bible study maybe and we can hear what all of you say about it, but let me put it this way, that we will not go back to what we've been before we were made. You know, the Bible says, "God took dust from the dust of the earth, he formed man. This man came into existence, this man that was in existence, his name was Adam. And then God wanted to persuade this Adam of what kind of a being he is. And he brought all the animals before him and Adam couldn't find anyone like him. So Adam at least knew that none of these are my kind. And then God tried to explain to Adam and was communicating with Adam where Adam actually came from. And then God took Adam, put Adam in a deep sleep. And out of his sight, he took a robe and formed Eve. And then he said, 'Flesh of my flesh, bone of my bone.' Because he was actually talking and prophesying towards Christ. Plus, he was also telling man where man actually comes from. He wanted to tell Adam, "Adam, I want you to have a persuasion that you are like me. You are of me, you are the God kind, that's what I want you to believe." Adam was almost, he was a man with a mind, a will, emotions, intellect, ready to be programmed by God, to be persuaded with a persuasion of God and then his life would be preserved forever. That's why he had access unto the tree of life. The tree of life was something that he could go and eat of. It wasn't something that was already inside him. He could go and eat of it. That is, that's the whole thing. So, in the very same way, the plan that God has with you, the plan that God has with me is not to try and, try for us, try that we can rebuke ISIS and then ISIS cease to exist because the mighty people of God has arrived. That is not God's end goal. God is not threatened by ISIS, he's not threatened by the bombings in Brussels, he's not... That doesn't shape him. Death today doesn't shake God because God can raise the dead. We need to understand that. Not that I say he will not intervene, not that I say there will not be signs, wonders, miracles that we can even rely upon that and call upon that. But we cannot make that the end goal. Because the moment we make that end goal, we are missing what God wants for us and what the sign is actually pointing to. It's like, let's get back to the analogy of me driving to Janusburg. If I arrive at a sign that says Bloemfontein, 100 miles, and I decided right there, because this is such a gigantic, beautiful, brand-new sign that's painted with the best paint you can ever find and it shines at night, it's got lights around it and there's even a cafe next to it. If I then decide, well, I've arrived, you know, this is it. You know what, I'm never, ever going to get to the place where I need to be. My hope is wrong, my destiny is wrong. The gospel of Jesus is the message which was from the beginning. What was the message from the beginning that God preached to Adam? "Adam, don't eat of this tree, for the day you eat thereof you will die. What I want you to have is eternal life. With me you can live forever." And the eternal life that God has, I explained in the Last Sunday's message, is a quality of life that is of such high standard that it cannot decay. It will exist forever. And that is what he invited Adam into. It would be like what we, like a family. I have three boys and today, today I got them to work. Man, it was nice. I had to do the gate, I took all the wood off the gate and it's a lot of wood and sanded down everything and varnished it again and put everything back all in one day. My three boys did it for me. So, they, when they were born, they were born with a brain, they were born with organs inside them, they were born with muscles, they were born with everything inside them. And I have a certain life. You know, I like to do things with my hands, I like photography, I like electronics, I like gadgets, I like traveling, I like to joke and all those kinds of things. That's just the person that I am. And when I see them, I see a being with an intellect and a mind and a will, emotions, ready to be programmed with what I think is nice. And then if I can program them with who I am, then they can actually feel what it feels like to be me. And so they can share in my life. And I would like to do that without killing who they are. Because it doesn't help, I just have people that's 100% like me in thinking and everything, because then we don't have fellowship anymore. You know, it's just then I could have been alone and just have a mirror. So in the very same way, we are, you know, that, that's how God made us. When he made Adam, I believe we can liken it to a baby that is ready to be programmed. And his plan for this baby is to have his life, which is an eternal immortal life, and that he wouldn't die, like we would have with our children. The very same way, we want, we, we don't plan harm for them. Um, and we know the only way they cannot, they will be outside of harm's way is if they have, and I'm just talking, I'm, I'm not talking spiritual now, I'm just talking normal life. If they have, uh, if they live responsibly, if they don't do drugs, if they're not, uh, uh, addicted to something. Um, we, if we want them to have a long life, we want them to live in a safe place. We want them to have a safe car. We want them to have everything that's safe. And we know that if they have a certain logic and certain way of thinking, there's a very good chance, um, you know, and a certain value system, that they will live a long life. In the very same way, when God made us, he knew there were certain things that will cause us to have a very long life, as a matter of fact, eternal life. And the only thing that could bring that forth is, is spirit. Now, um, I want to read, I'm gonna read two verses. Romans six, verse four. Just look at the power of the spirit of God. It says, therefore, we are buried with him by baptism into death, that like as Christ was raised from the dead by the glory of the Father, even so, we also should walk in the newness of life. So what raised Jesus from the dead? The glory of the Father. If you're gonna study the word glory there in the Greek, it talks about the view and an opinion of someone. The glory of Tiger Woods is the view and opinion we have of him as pertaining to golf. That is his glory. Um, the, the, the glory of, uh, a, 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 a well-known TV star is the fact that they can act well. That's their glory. Um, in the very same way, the Father has a glory, a good view and a good opinion that's formed about him because of all the wonderful attributes that he has. God lives in a spirit of kindness, a spirit of goodness, a spirit of gentleness. He's, 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 he's got a word, if he's got a word, it is a word that will, um, that he will keep too. He's got, uh, equity of character, he's got integrity, he's got all those kind of things. And all of those things, you know, shapes and forms is, is his glory. That is the view and opinion people will have about him. So the view and opinion that there was in the Father, that Jesus knew about and trusted in, is what raised him from the dead. Now, let's read chapter eight, verse 11, and we look at this view and opinion. It says, but if the spirit of him that raised up Jesus from the dead dwell in you, he that raised up Christ from the dead shall also quicken your mortal bodies by the very same spirit that dwells in you. Okay, so what is he saying here? This is beautiful. He says, the spirit of him that raised Christ from the dead. So the glory of God, the attributes, the way wherein God lives, his wonderful life, is the spirit wherein he is. As much as what Eugene Terblanche would have a spirit of racism and a certain spirit inside him, this, God has got a certain spirit. And, and this spirit has got a certain attribute. When we can have, when we are, when we can just think and ponder upon and believe in how good God is, then his spirit, the goodness that's inside him, is starting to indwell our hearts. Are, are you seeing what I'm saying? If I meditate on what, what happened in Brussels, the, 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 the spirit of despair will start to dwell in my heart. It will, it will first maybe dwell in my mind, and I will look and come to certain conclusions. And if I, if I meditate upon it long enough, it can actually indwell my belief system. And from there I can, my belief about Muslims, my belief about, um, America, my belief about, uh, Europe can, can be, can be shaped. You know, I've just seen something on the news. They believe that s, s, some of the, uh, the American, um, uh, I, I don't know what the one guy is, but was also running for president. He says, the reason why Brussels was bombed is because of, uh, Donald Trump. Now, you see how your belief can be shaped, uh, uh, because of certain things, you know? And the spirit, this, there's a certain spirit that starts to indwell you. Now, if you can start to think of how loving God is, how caring God is, and how innocent he is, how he made you to be alive, to program you uh, with his goodness and by his kindness. We start to think and ponder upon all these things, and you actually start to think of Jesus and what he has done, and what it means. And those thoughts start to indwell you, and you start to believe it. Then the spirit of God is indwelling you. It has entered you. Um, as a matter of fact, you can, when that has happened, you can have a life born from the spirit. What is the spirit? The Bible says, the word is the spirit. What is this word? It's the message of your, it's a message, the true word of the spirit is the word that immortality has been granted to man. We've been made alive, and the fact that we've been made alive has given us a place where we possess a mind. Uh, we have the ability to live from a certain spirit. We've got a core of life inside us and all those kind of things. We are alive. And that, and that gives us access to the persuasion of God, the ability to actually receive that very persuasion of God. And should we then pers, receive that, this life, this dust that we were taken from can be eternally preserved in the life of God. That was God's plan. God's plan was to give you immortality, eternal life. The devil came, and he wanted to come, and he said, you can be like God. And I believe what was in Adam's mind was, you can become immortal. Because there's one thing you must realize. We can, when you look at God, what makes God, what's, what distinguishes God from anything else on the planet and in existence is the following attribute. The Bible says, and God is the only immortal. Okay, so if you want to say, I am like God, you need to possess immortality. And why would Paul go and write to Timothy and say, the only immortal? The only one that possesses immortality, the only one. And then he says, this one, this only one, that has immortality, when his spirit indwells you, then you also possess eternal life. And because eternal life belongs to you, you have the power in the return of Christ to be made immortal. Which is very powerful. Because the moment we start to see things that way, um, we, we start to value, we don't put a big emphasis and a value on how we look today, what we wear today, how much money we have in the bank today, what we can achieve today. That is not what we do. We, we live in a place where we start to value the spirit inside us. We start to, we, we want to live in the bond of the peace that the Holy Spirit brings. We want to live in the union of the spirit. We want to think, we want to pray in the spirit. And, and, and what is this spirit? Let me read one more verse. Romans eight, and verse two. Romans eight, and verse two. For the law of the spirit of life. Okay, I want you to read that with me. For the law of the spirit of life. So what is the spirit? It is a spirit of life. The Bible is in John chapter one, that which was from the beginning. Let me read that. John one. So the spirit of God is the spirit of life. What will the spirit of life do? We just read in Romans eight, this spirit of life that raised Jesus from the dead. The moment we start to see the spirit as a spirit that's gonna give me life. And when we think of that life, I'm not thinking of just being alive. There are many people alive. Life has been granted to them. The spirit of God, uh, was, has granted them to be alive. But that doesn't mean that they have the life of the spirit. They are just alive. There's a difference between a person that is alive and one that's born of God. Or born from the Holy Spirit. Right? You guys smile so friendly, but you say nothing. It's because you mute it. Right, let's go to John one. In the beginning was the message. What is this message that was in the beginning? What was the message that God had from the beginning? Is I'm gonna take dust, and I want to make it alive, and I never wanted to die. That's the message. It was from the beginning. I mean, if you look at God's dealings with Adam, what message do you get? You get the message that God wanted to protect this being forever, and he wanted him to live forever and never die. This message, or this word, this logic or logos, which was from the beginning. It was from the beginning, and the word was with God, and this word is God. This word is the word of life. God is life. Okay? All things that came, became alive, or that came into existence, was made from him or by him, and without him was not anything made that was made. You see how John comes, and he tries to get these people to start to think of God as a life giver, a savior from death. That's what he's trying to get them to understand. And listen to this. In this word was life, and this life is the light of man. Glory to God. So, I'm gonna end off, um, by just reading, uh, the Romans eight, ten, eight, verse two, and eight, verse 10. It says, for the law of the spirit of life. There's a law of the spirit of life. That law of the spirit of life is the following. The spirit shall make you alive. The spirit shall bring forth the life of God in you. That is it. That is it. The only thing you need to have is this spirit. How do you have the spirit? The word of God, the Bible says, the word is the spirit. Okay, there's many other verses. It says in, in second Corinthians three, verse six, it says, who has also made us able ministers of the New Testament, not of the letter, but of the spirit, for the letter kills, but the spirit gives life. For he that sows to his flesh shall of the flesh reap corruption. But he that sows to the spirit shall of the spirit reap everlasting life. Do you see that? We will reap everlasting life. Everlasting life is the quality of life that's inside you. It's basically the seed that's inside you that will spring up into everlasting life. Does the Bible not say that I will give you of this water to drink, and this water will spring up into everlasting life? That's what the water will spring up to, into everlasting life. And if you possess everlasting life, the fact that you have everlasting life indwelling a mortal body says the following. If everlasting life indwells a mortal body, it shall make the mortal body immortal. That is the law of life. There is a law that says, should the spirit of life indwell you, that spirit of life shall bring forth immortality in your life. Now, to have, that means the spirit will bear a fruit in us, which is called immortality. Now, none of us has seen that yet. None of us. There were some people that said they have it today, and they have passed away. Um, they, they have eternal life, and they shall still have immortality um, in the return of Christ, as pertaining to their physical bodies being raised from the dead. Because we kind of have a part of you dead, and say you have immortality. But what, what I'm getting to here is that through the spirit, we will have eternal life, manifesting in immortality. Should we have that spirit in us? We shall see the effects of that spirit in us. And a soul is something that has the ability to have a certain belief, live inside this soul, this person, and then that belief can actually animate or give life to that being. So what that means is that as a living soul, when the spirit of God indwells us, we will find the fruit of the spirit in us. Called love, joy, peace, kindness, meekness, temperance, faith. All those kind of things will be the fruit of this spirit, which is the spirit of life. You know, when you start to believe that, when the spirit indwells you, this is what I believe the correct way wherein the spirit indwells you is when the spirit of life, which is the belief or the persuasion of life, starts to indwell you. If I say to you, a spirit of racism indwells you, or a spirit of bitterness indwells you, then where will that lead you? It will lead you to separation and all those kind of things, hurt and pain. That's where it will lead you. But if the spirit of life, meaning the word that I will be made immortal in the return of Christ, and so I've conquered death, indwells my belief, and that is what my hope is, that is what my persuasion is, you know what's gonna happen? That spirit is gonna start to bear its fruit in you. And you know, the end goal is not even just that fruit. We've made the fruit of the spirit the end goal. No, no, no. The end goal, God can still handle it if, you know, God, God showed us what he could handle when he walked earth. And he handled Peter, he handled James and John, that wanted to call fire from heaven and destroy the people he came to save. Imagine if Jesus comes to save people. Man, I'm gonna save those people. Ah, they're gone. You know, because James and John got there before me. You know, if you start to have that kind of a, 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 he handled those fuckers. And to, I think to Jesus, that, the, the fact that Peter wanted to draw his sword and protect Jesus wasn't the end of the world to Jesus. Because Jesus knew inside Peter is a seed that can raise him from the dead one day. But the fruit of the spirit can give him a quality of life today. So the end goal wasn't even this fruit of the spirit. The end goal was that, I mean, all of the fruit of the spirit will manifest in us in the return of Christ. We will have all of that. But we want to have a good life in this world, which will be by the attributes of the Holy Spirit in us. And all of that is inside us on account of a belief which says, the one that has conquered death has promised me that I will live, and even if I die, I will be raised. And if I'm alive and he returns, I shall be changed into that immortal life. And I think if we started from that perspective, where I speak about the fruit of the spirit as fruits that we have, we can also talk about the gifts of the spirit. Okay, so I've said a lot, and I went completely over the time I wanted to spend on this, but you guys were drawing it out of me. So, um, we, we want, we want to talk about the gifts of the spirit in the line of that. We want to talk about, why is a gift of the spirit to heal the sick? Why is there such a gift as prophecy? Why? Why miracles? Why all of these things? Why would the spirit bring forth that? When the Bible talks about gifts, the language gift in Afrikaans is the word "Gnade hava", which actually means "a grace gift." That's what it literally means in the Greek as well. It is an enablement by grace. An enablement by grace, where God has come and listened to what grace is, divinely influenced us unto a place where these living souls can have their lives preserved eternally. Remember what the Bible says? It says, "I give you a life, and if you wanna save your life and preserve your life by your own works, you're gonna lose your life." But if you lose your life, in other words, the life where you try to preserve your life and trust me to preserve your life, you will keep your life. In other words, the life that you've been given will be kept, and you will live forever with God in his return and in his glorification. From there, we have the gifts of the spirit. From there, we have teachers. From there, we have all these different gifts. And next week, we're gonna talk about those gifts. But I want you to think and ponder upon this, because the gifts of the spirit, the fruit of the spirit, is the side effect of the belief and the end goal of making us immortal. We need to understand that. Maybe you haven't heard other people talk about that. That's okay, you know? There's always a first time for something. I believe that the fruit of the spirit is just a side effect of having a persuasion that you can live forever in the turn of Christ. The gift of the spirit, the ability to heal the sick, cleanse the leper, raise the dead, prophesy, is just a side effect of believing that God has granted unto us immortality, and is a side effect of a person or a living soul that is persuaded with the spirit of life. Think of it this way. When everyone thinks of the Holy Spirit, think of the spirit of life. And we think of that life, we think of the immortality that's inside God, that's been granted to us, the spirit that takes us there. As we have that, we start to think differently about sickness. We start to think differently about death. We start to think differently about all those kind of things. And inside us rises up an excitement about what is going to take place in the return of Christ. And then we find this spirit and this persuasion lead us to say, "To the sick, be healed," to say this and to say that, which I will get into more next week. Glory to God. Amen. You can switch your mics on and talk if you like.